Okay, I would like to call the Wednesday, July 29th, 2020, virtual special meeting to order. At this time, I'd like for you to bow for a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you can, stand where you are for the Pledge of Allegiance. I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Real quick, Mr. Parent, for those of you, if you're, for right now, if you're not talking, we would like to ask you to go ahead and mute. We are getting some distortion. I don't know if you guys can hear it. A little bit of distortion. So let's try muting and then we'll, we'll see if we can, we can solve that problem there. It sounds better already. So let's try to follow that process so we can have some good quality audio. Thanks.
All right. The next item is the mission statement. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship. The next item on the agenda is roll call. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Good evening, President.
Addison?
Here.
Mr. Barnes?
Present.
Mrs. Hines?
Present.
Mr. Lamb? Mr. Lamb, you're muted.
Present.
Reverend Patello?
Present.
Mrs. Shoemake?
Present.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Parent?
Present. All right. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of the agenda for this evening. You have a copy. It's discussion reopening of schools. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second. Second, Addison.
Addison seconded. Who made the motion? I couldn't see.
Hello.
Oh, okay. All right. The motion's been made. And second is, there any discussion? The only thing that I would like to say is that before we leave this evening, we need to discuss the board retreat on August the 8th, whether you want an in-person meeting or you want a virtual meeting. So that, if that, if that, if you want that added to the agenda, or that's something that we can discuss. But we need to discuss based on the governor's, based on the governor's with Hampton Roads, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to do an in-person meeting, but we need to discuss that for August the 8th, okay? Do I need, do I need to add that as an agenda item, or can we just discuss that?
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Yes, Ed.
Yes, Ted.
Yes, as I had sent a message to you, you know, I may have to cut out if the meeting goes over, but I will abide by whatever agreement that the whole board agrees with.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. Since there's no other discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote for the approval of the agenda.
Okay, let me be clear first. Are we adding this as an item? Is it, yes, it's a second item?
Well, go ahead and, go ahead and add it as a second item.
Okay.
I'd rather do that. I'd rather do that, okay? As amended.
Got it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Addison?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes? Mr. Barnes? He's muted.
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Parent.
Yes, ma'am.
My, my button keeps going in and out, this mute button. I wanted to amend the agenda so that we could possibly vote on the reopening plan tonight instead of at the virtual meeting. Can we amend the agenda for that?
Absolutely. If the, if the board, yeah, I mean, if you want to add that as an item, yes.
I heard it.
Second, Addison. Yeah.
I didn't get who made the motion.
Are you making a motion, Ms. Williams?
Yes, well, I'd like to make a motion. I want to move to amend the agenda that we also add that we vote on the reopening plan tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, this is actually an Allen.
It says Allen, okay. Yes, ma'am.
We have the, we've informed the public that the survey is open until the 3rd, correct, Dr. Bracy?
Dean, this, working with everybody muted. Dr. Bracy, Ms. Allen asked you a question about the survey.
Yeah, I answered. I told her it was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My concern with the vote tonight is that we've informed the public that our staff, that the, I'm not sure why I have that horrible feedback, but we've informed them that the survey is open until the 3rd. So if we vote tonight, we are not giving them the opportunity to finish the surveys and, and make their points known. But I would be concerned about voting tonight after we've already told the public they have a determination, and we are supposed to get that information before we make a determination based off of input from staff and the public.
Dr. Bracy?
Doc, well, I guess my hand is up to make a comment.
I'm sorry, I can't see all of y'all. I can only see so many people on the screen. Okay, Ms. Williams, I'm sorry, I have to flip the screen.
Okay, I have gotten quite a few inboxes, emails, asking that Portsmouth make the decision if we possibly could tonight. The, the surveys from the groups that, you know, they have this Portsmouth teachers, staff, and whatever, they're overwhelmingly virtual. Most of the comments I've received are for virtual. All the surrounding school divisions are going with virtual. People do want to have the opportunity to make arrangements for childcare if they're working. I, I think the majority of the survey results that are coming in from what I was told are for virtual. And my concern is, as always, is about the safety of our students and our staff. So it, for me, I'm looking at the data and the science that I hear every day in the news and everything else. So that was the reason I was suggesting that we, that we go ahead.
Well, let me just, let me just say this. Wait a minute. Who's talk, let me say this. Oh, Ms. Addison, I'm sorry. Are you talking?
Yeah, so, so what I was saying is, I think we as a board have to, you know, make the executive decision to expedite this. We have a tax-free weekend in Virginia coming up, and our retreat is after that. So a lot of our parents do depend on that weekend to do a lot of their school shopping and purchase supplies. So I think expediting the vote will help with that. Thank you.
Dr. Bracy and I, we talked earlier that the possibility would be that you would, the board would might consider this evening that you would want to vote on the reopening of schools after Dr. Bracy makes his presentation. I did ask that same question, Mrs. Williams, about the August 3rd deadline. But I think once you hear Dr. Bracy's report this evening, I think that, and I'm not speaking for Dr. Bracy, and I'm not, certainly not speaking on, but I am just saying as a board member, I think that we will be able to make a decision after you hear Dr. Bracy's report, even though the, the surveys will not be due until the 3rd. He has gone through and, and we've gotten a large number of requests. And I think based on what the governor has already instituted as far as Hampton Roads is concerned, and everybody's going virtual, anyway, if y'all want to add this to the agenda, I will add it to the agenda with your approval.
Well, let me, can I ask a question?
Mister, who is, who is, I'm sorry, I can only see none at the time.
DeAndre.
Yes, DeAndre, go ahead.
The results of the first survey, will we get those tonight?
Well, I asked Dr. Bracy, and I think he's going to, he's, he's going to share that because that was when we were in Phase 2. And now, you know, since we went to Phase 3, there's another survey. So I did ask him to have a comparison of what people felt in Phase 2 as compared at this point, this evening, what people, how they, how they felt how the surveys were going in Phase 3. But Mrs. Williams has made a motion to add the opening of school, the reopening of school. And did I have a second? Was there a second?
Addison second.
All right. Okay, all right. And that will be on the agenda.
Can I ask a question?
Who is that?
It's, it's Angela Allen. I know that there was an original motion on the floor that was not pulled back before we added an additional motion. Am I correct now?
No, you're, you're correct. We added, we added the board retreat in-person virtual. And that is something that we added, and then Mrs. Williams now has added for us to vote on the reopening of, of schools on the agenda this evening. So we're.
Okay, so are you still in the discussion phase? I have one other question I'd like to add before.
I can't, I'm sorry, but I can't, we're getting so mu, I'm getting so much feedback.
Mr. Parent, if I could, if I could jump in. Miss, the, Ms. Williams, for some reason, it's, I don't know why, but we're getting some feedback on your iPad. We're the ones that are, that are, keep, we keep muting you unfortunately, because with you unmuted, it's creating the feedback. So I apologize for making that confused, making that, making, you know, annoying you with keeping on muting you, but for some reason, when you're unmuted, there's a lot of feedback. We hear ourselves talking through your device.
Wow, okay.
So we're going to need to keep you muted unless you need, unless you need to talk, then, then you can unmute yourself at that time. And then we'll figure out in, in the future how we can handle that, probably a headset of some kind. But we've not had that issue before with your device, so.
No.
Yeah.
All right. The original motion is consideration of the agenda. It was amended to include the board retreat, whether in-person or virtual. And then Mrs. Williams added another item to amend the original motion to, for us, for reopening of schools. And we have, we had a motion and we had a second. We're up, we're now up for discussion.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
And I understand everybody's point about people making, needing to make childcare arrangements and things of that nature. I just finished a call about childcare arrangements and things of that nature. I would be interested in finding out if we still allow the parents and staff to make their opportunities known on the 3rd, and then we have a, a special call meeting on the 4th. My concern is there are going to be parents who have wanted to participate in this survey. We publicly said that you have to the 3rd, and then we've made the arbitrary thing to do tonight to just cancel that out and not give them their opportunity to, we gave a deadline. So I would not be opposed, and I'd be interested, and of course, I will go with the consensus of the board. But if we've told the public they have to the 3rd to make a decision, we should move forward with that decision. And then if we need to come back together as a board after we let the public make their needs and desires know, come back on the 3rd or the 4th, get that information and then make a determination. I just, again, I understand the safety aspects of it, but I also understand that we told people that they have to the 3rd, and I'd like to see us abide by that. And if we need to come back early, if we need to come back before the retreat, we do that.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, and the motion is to amend the agenda for this evening to include the board retreat in-person virtual and to the, for board to vote on reopening of schools. We've had a, a motion that's been made by Ms. Williams and seconded, and we're in the discussion. So hearing no more discussion, what is the board's pleasure? I mean, roll call vote. We've had discussion of the, of the the item. So Kathy, would you do roll call vote, please? And we're voting, we're voting on the amended agenda for this evening to include the reopening of, of school and the board retreat in-person virtual.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Ms. Allen?
No.
Ms. Addison?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patullo?
Yes.
Mrs. Shoemake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no. It passes.
All right. Okay, that is, all right. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Bracy and let Dr. Bracy give his report. And then after that, we will continue with the agenda, okay? Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to everyone. So tonight, we're here to talk about our reopening of Portsmouth Public Schools and what that will look like. So I have to wait so I can see. So as you all know, as discussed earlier, we've been getting a lot of feedback as far as the reopening of schools. So the team has been working very, very diligently to put together a plan for us to present to you all to see. We can make sure you're all here, guys. The reopening of schools. Next slide. So what I wanted to leave with was the, looking at the timeline for reopening, as you all are aware, you know, we've been trying to find the safest way for our students to return to school when they return. And in that work, we've been working with the Virginia Department of Education as well as the Portsmouth Health Department and other regional partners in that effort. So if you look at the timeline that we, that we've been following, you're, you're aware that on March 13th, Governor Northam closed schools for the rest of this 2019, 2020 school year. And since that time, then June, he announced that we would be, he released the 136, 136-page booklet for us to use as a guideline for real. So when he was telling us that school was going to open in, in September, this is a document that, that we've been following. You know, we, we've had several reopening committees and subcommittees that have been meeting to follow these guidelines to find the safest way for us to return back into building. So in June, our administration, as I mentioned, we broke up into these committees and started looking at those reopening scenarios. And looking at that time, coming right out of being closed, we, we knew that at that time, we needed to look at survey results. Just, so we launched our first survey, because I think someone was asking about that. So that survey, when we, we did that survey, and I do have those results, at that time, it was 57% that said that they would send their students back, back to school, and 42% said no. So at that time, that's what the first survey said. And we also, in that same survey, did a poll to find out about the internet connectivity. How many, how many households had internet connectivity? And with that, we had 92% responded that they did, and we had about 7% that said that they didn't have access. So you, someone had asked for the results of that, of that survey. So those are the results.
Right.
Also, administration, we, we shared the timeline at our last board meeting in June. You know, I've heard the dialogue in terms of that it's, that it was, that we're making a decision, that the board decided to make the decision in, in August, because when we left that meeting, we basically laid everything out based on what the schedule said, that the next retreat, our next gathering would be the retreat, 8. But so much has occurred since then, and you know, with the, the call meeting, we basically just pulled everything together because we, when we looked at the survey and, and looked at the timeframe from the 20th through the 3rd, we wanted to basically get the information. We realized things were changing from what occurred in June, so we pushed it out to get the latest information. So we've got a, a good result, a number back, and I'll share that in a, in a, in a slide in a few minutes. So as I said, the 20th through, through August 3rd was the survey timeline, and then on the 8th was when we were scheduled to give a vote on, you're going to vote on the reopening plan, and then we would notify the families. Next slide. So when we talked about the, the scenarios, you know, we, we sent out four options. And when we launched the survey, we also had this information in there with it so that you could pull from. And when we looked at this information, we wanted to give all the possible reopening possibilities that are, that were available to us. And all of this was based on a Phase 3 opening. So with that, the first option we looked at was a virtual for all. So that would, that we would have all of our students coming in, well, not coming in, they would, they would be receiving online instruction. So with that, they'll be issued, division issued devices, Chromebooks, iPads. And the students will also have assigned time to log on and participate in classroom lessons. And they will be provided guided lessons with assignments to complete. And the second and third option, those are our hybrid options. And the first is a hybrid for all. So with the hybrid for all, you're looking at students coming in two days a week, face-to-face, and three days virtual. So that will be a Monday and Tuesday if you're with that group, or two, or Thursday and Friday if you're with the other. One of the things that we realize, we have some parents that have kids that are in elementary, middle, and even in, even in high school. But in the event that we are attending on a hybrid model, we want to make sure that we keep that cohort together. We don't want parents to have kids attending on separate, on separate days. So that would be another hardship that they would have to endure, so we wouldn't want to do that. So with that, we, we have, Wednesday would be sort of like a staff planning professional day. Still would be virtual learning that will be taking place. But we would, we wouldn't have any, we wouldn't have any, any more than 50 students together at one time. So when I say that, I'm talking about, you know, large gatherings, you know, clubs and so forth. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have that. And the third option, we would pretty much just like the second, but that's with elementary and middle school students that will be actually coming face-to-face two days a week, and then the three days virtual. Whereas high school students will have all virtual instruction. And we looked at that for a couple, a couple of reasons. One, we know some of our older students are also caregivers, you know, they, they meet their younger siblings when they, when they get home and get off the bus. So we looked at them as being able to handle the, the virtual because we currently have a virtual, well, not a virtual, but we have a platform that they are already familiar with one-to-one. And with that, that would be an easier transition for our high school students as well as our high school teachers because they're familiar with that platform. So that's why we looked at it from another option with the hybrid. And then option four is a full in-school return. In this situation, you know, all students will return five days a week. So if that happened, then the school division would have to, we would have to come up with as many mitigation techniques as possible to fight the spread of COVID-19. So this, we would have to have a mandatory face coverage, and because social distancing would not be possible with this amount of students that would be in the building, and then we would have to have health checks at, at the school. But if in any of these scenarios, you know, in questions, I've received some of the questions as well, you know, attendance will be taken for both virtual and in-school class times. They will have student assignments. They will be graded, unlike what took place from March on, on to June. Because at that time, the governor had stated that we need to focus on a continuity of learning. But as we move forward into this school year, we want to make sure that if we're, we're grading assignments, students will be receiving new material.
Good.
So also, in cases with students with special needs and English language learners, you know, we will, we will, they will have access to the school buildings if needed for in-person instruction as outlined by the governor. So that, that is a one group that still may attend if, if necessary. We're going to look at the plans and, and see who falls into that category. So like, as I mentioned earlier, all this is based on Phase 3 reopen. And once we, once we, once we get to, once we decide what the option will be, then of course, we're going to make sure that we share all this information on our website and our social media accounts. So in looking at the survey results, these are the preliminary results. So as of yesterday, you know, there have been more than, you know, 4,500 parents responding. And 1,400 staff responses. So we, we have approximately 21, 2,100 staff. So we have 1,400 that have responded thus far.
Good, that's good.
Look at the parent survey, we have 68% of them that have identified option one, which is virtual for all, as their option for returning to school. And in the staff survey, 67% were either uncomfortable or very uncomfortable with the return. And 67%, they also identified option one as their preference if we were, if we were returning to school. Next slide. So in looking at our preparation for next year, so we have different departments that have been tasked with different options. So this is our operations department, and they've been doing quite a bit. And one of the things that you, you talk about is the deep cleaning that will have to take place. And we started that process when school closed in March. You know, we went on and into the buildings and started, since we knew school was, was canceled for the remainder of the year, we started our summer cleaning process early, but this time we did it with the mindset of knowing that we have to disinfect and clean. So they went, went right on and started that process. Our staff procured the electric static cleaners with the medical grade bio-disinfectant for all the classrooms and offices. I think at one of the previous meetings, it was asked if we were going to do a special contract with any outside vendors. But our, our guys had the foresight to really go ahead and get in front of that because these, this equipment now is, is, is on back or, so we were able to get, get these in, and we got one in, one in each building. And if you look to the left, you see the picture there, that, that's the feature that was on WVEC Channel 13, where they did a story on our operations department, deep cleaning one of our schools and sort of demonstrating what that process looked like. So our guys are really on top of it, and I think they were, we were some of the first out of the gate with this type of equipment. So I want to thank them for putting that, putting that together. Transportation, that staff, they've been developing bus plans in accordance with the BDOE guidelines in the event that we return to a hybrid in terms of what the seating would look like. Food services, you know, they've identified a process how we will provide breakfast and lunch in the classroom, as well as providing meals for families at the distribution sites as well. So looking at that from the. So looking at that from the, the hybrid model, because if you're looking at it from the hybrid model, you have two days that students are in school, but then you have three days that there aren't. So we have to look at ways that we're gonna get the meals to those families during that time. So we've been looking at that. And I, I've received a lot of questions about, uh, if we're totally virtual, what would that look like? So it would, right now, I think it'll look a lot like what we had in place uh, when school closed in March. You know, we'll have the, the site so open at the different schools. And then we'll also look at doing, um, as we call the, the magic, the magic school bus, distributing meals throughout the neighborhood. So that's, that's our plan to do that, to make sure that our families uh, receive the meals. And also, we've ordered uh, over fifty thousand pieces of P P E so that would be prepared either way the, the board decides to go as far as our return. Technology, another key piece, um, as you can imagine.
I'm sorry, can we go back one slide? Can I ask a question? It's, it's Duncan Hines.
Doc, Mrs. Hines, uh, Dr. Bracy's asked that if he could complete his presentation before we start asking questions, if he would allow him to do that, okay?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Bracy.
Yes, and for the, for technology, as you can imagine, you know, devices are gonna be very key. So we begin, uh, procuring these devices um, in the spring as well. Because we knew that everyone is gonna be looking for some type of Chromebook or laptop or, or device. So where we are with that, we have all, all of our students pre-K through two will have our division, division issued iPads. While three through twelve will have our Chromebooks that we issue. And, and, and also with that, uh, I wanna add, you know, we, we got the summer, we had, we did summer school. We had a, all virtual summer school. And the, the C N I team, which I'll get to in a minute, you know, they, they, one of the things that we looked at was, we're looking, we were looking at summer school as a, as a benchmark to, to sort of give us an idea of what potentially the fall would look like. So we already had in mind that, that we would be in this situation that we're in now. So that we wanted to look at, um, you know, what, what can we learn from summer school? So, and I've had, I had some discussions that I'll talk about uh, later as well when I met this, this afternoon with the, with my teacher advisory group, uh, as far as summer school. But that helped us as we roll out the, our implementation for this school year. So, and also our staff has been receiving uh, training, you know, we're, we have a own learning management system now, scology. And we've had, um, I think at least over fourteen hundred students that were already been uh, trained in that. And then we have some additional training that will take place with our staff next month.
Chairman Parent?
Yes.
Hey, this is, uh, Akerson. I just have a quick question for Dr. Bracy.
Well, hold on just a minute. Dr. Bracy requested that. Has been, he, board members, Dr. Bracy's requested that he finish his presentation before we ask uh, questions. And I'd like to honor that request.
Absolutely, no problem.
Just make, just make notes. I'm making notes as well. But he asked that we, uh, let him allow, allow him to finish the presentation and then we can ask.
Okay.
All right, thank, thank you.
All right. So next, the, um, our curriculum and instruction. Um, our curriculum coordinators have been, you know, restructuring the pacing guys to allow for uh, virtual instruction or the limited in-person instruction that we have so that we'll be prepared uh, either way. Uh, and they've also had a training session, which I've mentioned, um, with Google Classroom, uh, Near Card and Zoom. And as I mentioned, the fourteen hundred employees have already undergone training. And coordinators and staff are working on producing uh, gray level content with specific virtual lessons for us to use division-wide. Our, our H R department. So our H R, uh, human resources, they've been leading the, the COVID nineteen notification and protocol development. And they've been doing this in consultation with our health department, uh, Dr. James is on, she'll be talking later. And the CDC and School Board Council. And, and this has really been uh, an area here that, that we had to put a lot of thought into. Because we were, you know, delving into, to uncharted territory. So when we have cases where people have contracted or that they've been around people who have been infected, you know, we had to come up with uh, processes. And Dr. James from the Health Department, you know, walked us through that, you know. We would, we were having a conversation um, on Saturdays and Sundays and whenever the, the issue arrives. So she, she's, she's been very helpful with us uh, in this process. Um, also, H R has been, you know, working on placement for staff members who may have a limited role in, in a virtual or hybrid setting, you know, depending on, on their needs or the condition that they may, the condition that they may have to work in due to some type of uh, precondition health matter. Next slide, please. So with my office, um, specifically, some of the things that, that, that we've been doing. I, I've been monitoring, um, the emails that come in from the Ask Super account from the parents, community members and staff. As I mentioned earlier, we have a lot of, uh, of, of questions that come in. And we try to answer those um, as quickly as we can. Because we know that everybody is, we're in a situation that we've never been before. So everybody has questions and we wanna try to answer those questions as often as we can. One of the reasons that, you know, we were doing during the, the closure, we were sending out a, a weekly message on Sunday. Because that let parents know exactly where we were and what we were doing. Because we didn't want them to, to have to wonder. So that's why that, that time that we gave them, we wanted to make sure that they understood exactly where we were, what we were doing and what we needed them to, to do on our behalf. Uh, as I mentioned, you know, the Portsmouth Health Department has been there, uh, working with us throughout this whole process. Um, my, I met this afternoon, I had these meetings scheduled before we even had the, the call meeting. Because I, I had mentioned to, uh, Lauren that I wanted to have another meeting with my staff, the advisory group, the teachers to, just to get, to gauge where, where they were uh, with everything. So, and this, the screenshot that you see was our meeting that, that took place, um, earlier this afternoon. So that, we had some, it was a good dialogue. I think we went probably right at an hour. And they were very appreciative to give their input and give their recommendations as well in terms of what, what, what their thoughts were uh, upon us returning to school. And also, um, met this morning, uh, by Zoom with our P E A, uh, Mr. Gordon Jones is our president, uh, of the Portsmouth, uh, chapter. And, you know, we had a good conversation. You know, he reached out to me. And I saw his email and I responded right back to him. Because he was someone that I wanted to include in this conversation. So when I'm asked for a recommendation, I wanna make sure that I cover all the stakeholders, the key stakeholders that, that would be involved in this situation. So we had a great conversation with him and our new, um, UNICER director as well will be, um, joining the, the team. Uh, I wanna thank Stewart for joining me on that call as well. Also, um, met with Mrs. Donna Clifton. Miss Clifton and I, you know, we probably talk maybe every two weeks, if not more, just to find out, you know, what are the parents thinking? You know, she talks to her council of P T As that are at the, the school division, throughout the school division. And they're always, um, letting her know how they feel, what they're hearing, you know. What are some suggestions that, that she shares with me? So we have a constant communication as far as with these, these stakeholders, particularly the parents. Because those are the ones that we wanna hear, um, from. Because that, that, their, their choice means a lot in terms of what, what we decide to do. Next slide, please. All right. At this time, I will turn the screen over to Dr. Lauren James. She's director of the Portsmouth Health Department that I, uh, mentioned earlier. And after she finishes her presentation, I will come back and wrap up. So, Dr. James, if you will take over now, and I think you do have, your, your slides are embedded in mine. So go right ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Hello, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and start the presentation. All right, so we're gonna start, um, with, next slide, please, COVID basics. So as we know, in general, um, COVID symptoms are fever, sore throat, cough, difficulty breathing, fatigue, body aches, headaches, loss of taste or smell, congestion, nausea, vomiting, and diarrhea. And we also know that COVID is spread through respiratory droplet. And the evidence does show that kids are susceptible. But we have seen that they typically exhibit milder symptoms except, except in rare cases. What we do know is what works best to slow the spread. Social distancing, face covering, respiratory and hand hygiene, staying home when ill, except to seek care. And also taking care of your baseline health and staying up to date on vaccination. Next slide, please. Perfect. So our local transmission. This is a map of Virginia. And as we can see, the different levels of transmission are minimal, moderate, substantial. If you look in our eastern region, Ty, Water, Hampton Roads, uh, we are at substantial transmission. Factors that play a, um, role in this is, um, a look at our, um, percent positivity. The definition of that is how many positive cases we have out of all of our testing. So Portsmouth is about seventeen to eighteen percent for that. Um, Governor, um, Northam, as well as our Health Commissioner, they like us to be around ten percent. Um, additional factors they look at are our seven-day trending cases. And our cases have been trending upwards for the past seven days. So these factors come together to, um, show us that we are at substantial transmission. Next slide, please. So the guidance for our schools, while we're in substantial community transmission, are that we limit in-person instruction to the most vulnerable students and that we provide necessary services to vulnerable populations. That we have remote learning exceptions and teleworking be options for students and staff who are high-risk or severe illness. Um, that remote learning should be considered as a primary method of instructions. That we eliminate or limit extracurricular activities that are not for the purpose of providing childcare. And that we cancel social activities and gatherings that are not a part of the regular school service. Next slide, please. Perfect. PhD mitigation strategy. So as Dr. Bracy discussed, we've been talking since the beginning of the, the beginning of the pandemic, working on, um, solutions and cases and whatever may come about. Um, we just are gonna continue to work with the schools and keep them posted on our transmission level. Because this does directly tie into, um, suggestions on how the school should proceed with their, um, education. And once again, the trends we look at are increases in local outbreaks, hospitalizations, ED visits, uh, percent positivity, P P E usage, and the present, uh, the percentage of healthcare workers affected. And, um, lastly, um, we do have an internal team that reviews the school plans, both private and public schools. And we are assisting with the communication documents for our students, parents, and staff. And as Dr. Bracy also mentioned, it's so important that we be, um, transparent and clear with our parents so that they know what we can do and have clear set expectation. And lastly, we are recruiting additional staff so that, um, once our schools reopen, in whatever form it looks like, we wanna always make sure our school is up to date on V D H, CDC guidance on how our school should proceed and that they have any support needed. Um, so those are, um, the updates. I don't know if, if anyone had questions specifically for me, or I defer to Dr. Bracy otherwise.
Board members, do any of you have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
Hey, Dr. James, this is, uh, board member Akerson. Um, as far as guidance, in the event, I know we were saying that we were gonna try to, um, get some of our special needs students in the schools. In the event of, let's say, a staff or one of our special needs students, um, get tested positive for COVID, does that shut down the whole school again? Like, the restaurants do any event of a positive test? Or is there just like, that section is, is quarantined and broken off?
That is a very good question. So it would really depend on the span of that teacher. So for example, if that teacher directly worked with that one class, we would focus on that teacher or that student and that segregated population. So in most school plans that we've seen, it does try to kind of keep classes together with the same teacher. Um, so it would really just depend. But technically, that would not shut down the whole school. It would just depend on who that teacher had come into contact with. And that's where we will work closely with the school to have a plan, um, and have a direct contact so we can get in there at the very beginning and mitigate further transmission and amid the students.
Thank you, Dr. James.
I don't know who came first, Hines or, Hines or Lamb, but let's let Hines go and then Lamb.
Um, I will defer to Mr. Lamb because I, I believe he did say he had to duck out early meeting. So I'll defer to him first.
All right, Mr. Lamb?
Yeah. And it is, it does have to do with the special needs.
I think you froze.
Uh, it does have to do with special needs.
I think Mr. Lamb has froze. At least he throws it on my screen.
Mine as well.
Yep.
Mrs. Hines, until we can get him back up, you wanna go ahead and ask your question?
Absolutely. And if he jumps in, I will, I will defer. Um, my question is for, uh, Dr. James. I wanna say thank you first for the presentation and keeping us all up to speed as to what's going on. Um, my question is gonna be, when, because I know, I, I know virtual learning is, is where we probably need to be. However, um, when can we safely start looking at a hybrid plan? What are your metrics? What is your, what are your statistics, um, for us to even to begin to look at hybrid planning? Um, for bringing students back into the classroom? Because as much as I want safety for our parents and our students and our staff, I also understand that kids need kids. So, uh, being torn between that, what is your metric for when we can safely look at bringing back in?
That is a very good question. And specifically, what we will want is we will be looking at, um, when we are out of the red. Um, we will wanna have moderate to minimal, um, caseload or what we call transmission. And specific factors we look at, um, per the V D H site. We will look at, we will want our cases to be trending down for a consistent amount of time. And we will also want them to be, um, in a lower range. Um, so we basically hit our peak over the past week or so. We've had our peak. In addition to that, we will wanna have a decrease in hospitalizations, percent positivity, as we discussed. Um, our governor and health commissioner, they recommended that we be in ten percent. We're seventeen to eighteen percent. So as that trends downward, that is, would also show that we're moving towards, um, being able to have that discussion. You had a really good question. Um, and also decreases in our hospitalizations. So factors like that.
Okay. Uh, because I know we're gonna start ver-, you know, I, I'm assuming that we're gonna start virtual simply because the governor has mandated or has put us into, back into phase two. Um, but I know the questions are gonna be, well, when do we, when can we start looking at going back? Because I want my kids to go back. Um, so I just wanna have something that I can give and, in, in answer with some statistics. Because I'm not a doctor, um, and I'm not, I don't know what to tell them. So thank you very much.
Add one more thing to your point. Um, the changes that, um, Governor Northam made, we will see those changes in our health stat, um, our health data in about two to three weeks. So you might wanna let parents know that as well, that maybe like a month out would be a great time for us to start our. be a great time for us to start our plan, you know, as needed.
Okay.
Is Mr. Lamb still with us? I can't, I don't see him.
No, I think he dropped out. We'll watch for him and put him back in if he enters the waiting room.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Dr. James?
Mr. Parent, I had a question. This is Cardielle Patel.
Oh, Remontella, okay.
Dr. James, thank you again for your presentation. I did just wanna clarify. So let's say, we know most classroom teachers, they're confined to just their clusters of students, but let's say an encore teacher, a music teacher who teaches music, who interacts with all five hundred or all six hundred students. If they were to contact the virus, and in turn, that could possibly shut down the entire school, correct? Because you're not for all students.
That's a good question. I will admit, I'm not very familiar with how that process would work. So you're saying that like an auxiliary teacher, like a music teacher and an art teacher, they come into access, not access, they come into contact with every single student in like a day span, a week span? So a lot of those things with factors. So basically, the Health Department, once we know our case, so we'll say like our index case is the first person, so let's say that's the teacher. When that teacher is notified, we need to know who they come into contact with. So it really isn't like a one-size-fits-all. And something else we have to remember is, we should be asking our teachers to self-monitor, and they shouldn't be showing up if they are sick or ill. So the hope is that we would already know and be able to be proactive and mitigate shutting down the whole school. But if that is the need, that is how we will proceed. But it's really a case-by-case basis.
Yeah. Thank you. And I think we really need to make sure we really focus on a plan of action for that, because in many of our schools, you also have students that have three to four to five siblings in the school also, that they may come in contact with at home and bring it back to school. So I really think a plan of action for that really needs to be talked about as well. Thank you.
Okay. Board members, do you have any other questions for Dr. James? Dr. James, thank you very much for attending. And at this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Bracy to complete his presentation. Dr. Bracy?
Okay, thank you, Chairman Parent. So as we mentioned earlier, the survey's closed on the third, and then the results, we'll send the results to you, of course, ahead of the retreat, as we had planned to do. So we'll still do that. We'll make sure you get the final numbers. And the staff members, you know, we're gonna continue planning for virtual, however, or full return to school. That hasn't stopped. We'll continue to do that. And then following the board, both announcements, which the specific FAQs will be sent out to staff and families and posted on the division's website and social media channels. And a lot of those FAQs have a lot of the questions that people have been asking as well. And next is questions. So, and I know you all have questions. Let me, I have two that let me share with you, because being that this was, this meeting was virtual, we, when we sent the information out, we asked them to use the Ask Super account for questions that they may have. And I received four. One was dealing with the special ed situation about, you know, accommodations, and this Battle Hardy, I think, was gonna reach out directly to that, to that parent, to explain that to them. But the other three questions that I received was basically talking about parents who are working parents, and their children may not be in front of the computer during the time that the teacher is instructing. So what would that mean as far as them getting their lesson or instruction from the teacher? And what would happen as far as, I think, one went on to say about attendance? So the lessons are gonna be pre-recorded. That's one of the things that we will have. So they'll be able to log in and to find out exactly what was discussed. And we also will have, and Dr. Nguyen can jump in here and add to that, just because we had a conversation about this Monday, as far as, you know, what's gonna happen for the parent that's working that may need some assistance with the lesson, and just having a teacher or support that would be available to jump in for those parents that may not be able to be there during the time that that teacher is on. So Dr. Nguyen, did you wanna add anything else to that?
I just wanna emphasize that we will have several layers of support for parents. First of all, we want to assure parents that attendance is not taken based upon the online interactions with the teacher. If the student can't get on Zoom, they're not penalized for that. They are, they will rather be, their attendance will be based on the task and the performance that they do with the task. We recognize that a lot of parents are working, and so my team is working to prepare parents for what this could look like for them and how they can support their children. We have parent liaisons in every school that will be able to reach out to parents who are experiencing difficulty. We recognize that they are having to work during the day, and so we will have lessons preloaded that they can watch with their children when they get home, or the kids can watch them when they're babysitter, or they can watch them with an older sibling. And I was actually just sitting here thinking that some of the things we can do also is have some of our high school students perhaps reach out to some of these students to assist them, especially in the lower grade levels. We know that there's a large learning curve, especially for our pre-K students, our kindergarten students first through second. And so we plan to provide a large amount of support to those parents and to those children. In fact, the principals are already reaching out to some of those individuals to help them kinda navigate what it looks like. We're gonna be using Schoology, which is our new learning management system. We've already started the training for that. Our instructional technology team with Jennifer Thomas has been working diligently to get teachers trained. We also would like to have parents understand how to work some of these systems. So we're planning to set up some webinars, so that parents can possibly go in and learn how to navigate with their children as well. So we are constantly getting feedback from our teachers and our parents, and using that information to build a platform and supports that will be beneficial to the parents and to our students.
Thank you, Chairman Parent. And I'm prepared now for the other questions.
All right. I know Ms. Hines had a question, then it was Atkinson, and we'll go back to Ms. Hines, and then we'll follow through with Ms. Atkinson. Besides, do you have any questions that you would like to ask?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Parent.
Of this person, yes.
Specific to the presentation that was given, the question about the PPE, the fifty thousand pieces that have been ordered, is that for students and staff? And at what point are, if, students and staff would have to provide their own?
That is a combination of both staff and students. And one of the things that we were looking at as a division is that we were gonna, we were gonna provide the PPEs. You know, we weren't gonna put that on the parents, because if we want to make sure and ensure safety for everyone in the building and with the surroundings, and that's something that we wanted to make sure that we put in place ourselves. So that's something that we've been working with Mr. Falk, as far as identifying a funding source for that particular area. So we want to provide that ourselves for our staff and student. So, and I'm not saying they're not gonna have their own, that they bring, that's fine. But we will have, in the event, if someone doesn't have one, that we will provide.
Okay. All right. I will, I will give, no, 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 I'll give some more time away, and then we'll come back and have some more. I don't wanna take up everybody's time.
All right. Ms. Atkinson, you were next, so go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Parent. I did have a couple of questions from parents. Are we going to allow parents to utilize their own computers, like, set it up for them? Or are we recommending that they stick to what we issue them?
Now, as far as being able to log on, and now, we touched on that. I think that question came on Monday in our discussion, where is that some may have their own devices that they may want to use, but, you know, everybody will have a division issue Chromebook or app, depending on the grade span. But as far as being able to log in, now, I'm gonna have to ask Dean specifically if it's something that we may have on our system that they may not be able to access from their own computer.
Right. So that's where my question was coming from. Will logging in from an outside computer make us more susceptible to get hacked or prone to viruses? So, yeah.
Good question.
Yeah, let me.
No, thank you, Dr. Bracy. No, the short answer is, is, you know, if folks have their own equipment, we would actually encourage them to use their own equipment. All these systems are web-based, and it's gonna allow a lot of flexibility. So if somebody prefers to use their own equipment and they're more comfortable with that, then by all means.
Okay. And just to follow up on the technology, Chairman Parent, and then I'll yield for someone else.
Sure.
What is the plan if, for broken, stolen, lost technology?
I noticed you didn't say if with that. So, you know, we've had, we've had, we were fortunate to have started a one-to-one program in our high schools and ran that program for a while, and we're just expanding our program. We were also fortunate to do the summer program, so we've got to do distributions within our schools and also do support. We've been doing support in all of our schools now through the summer program, and it's been very beneficial for us. So it's gonna be no easy task. We are certainly not alone, but we're creating a plan so that if the device is broken, we wanna make sure, the whole goal will be to make sure that students get another device in hand as quickly as possible. With lost and stolen, we're gonna look for patterns. We certainly wanna make sure that we're holding people accountable. These are limited resources, and they're, we wanna make sure that folks take good care of them. But our goal is to make sure our students have devices so that they can participate in our programs. That's gonna be the goal for us, and to make sure that we're available. So if devices are broken, if they're lost, if they're stolen, we're gonna have processes in place where they can work with the schools to either get a new device, or we can help them, help them to find it.
Thank you.
All right. Any more, any other questions?
Chairman Parent, after they finish.
All right. I heard Sheamus. Sheamus.
Well, Deandra.
All right, Mr. Barnes, I'm sorry. I can't see, but nine people on the screen at a time. So let's let this, Sheamus go, then Ms. Williams, and then you, Mr. Barnes. Is that all right? The ladies go first? All right? All right. All right, Ms. Sheamus, go ahead.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Parent. And also, thank you to Dr. Bracy and staff, and Dr. James. I don't necessarily have a question, but I do have a statement or a comment. Really quickly, wanna say thank you about the consideration of the shifts for the teachers. I'm assuming that's what we were alluding to with making the teachers available around the clock, not necessarily around the clock, but for a substantial amount of time to assist with the parents. I also heard that the teachers were in the process of training. So I wanted to make sure that we also provide the parents and the guardians with some type of training as far as technology, because not everyone is tech savvy, specifically the parents. So if they come and pick up their Chromebook, would we be providing them with some type of instruction, or have some type of Zoom meeting set up for them to have some type of training, so that they can better assist their students? So these are just suggestions. So I would like for that to happen, because I've had a lot of parents and a lot of guardians to reach out to me, stating that they're not tech savvy, and they want to be able to help their child, or their grandchild, or their niece, or their nephew. And so they would like some form of training. So I would yield to Board Member Williams.
All right, Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams? Gotta unmute yourself.
Thank you. And thank you to Dr. Bracy and the staff, and of course, to Dr. James for being on the call. That was very valuable information about the positivity rates and where, how we're trending, and when we're trending down to a certain level is when we could consider the hybrid model. My question was also, when will the parents, when can they expect to be able to pick up Chromebooks or whatever? And also, did we get enough of the hotspots for the internet connection for those that do not have the internet?
Is that Dean, Dr. Nguyen?
Well, yes. I can say that.
Go ahead.
All right. I can say that we have, we placed the order for the Chromebooks. All of them have not come in yet. So we, you know, being it out, we were talking about that earlier this week, along with Mr. Falk, and I'm talking about it today, in terms of trying to figure out when we're gonna, when will they come in? You know, with a lot of these orders, as you can imagine, everyone is looking for some type of device, Chromebook, some type of laptop. So our order is in, everything is not in our hands yet, but it's on the way, or it has been processed, I should say. And as far as the MFI, the connectivity, you know, we experienced that this summer. So we did pass out MFI devices this summer to students that needed it. And at that time, we had enough devices, you know, we had some that were left over. So we're in the process now, probably, as late as, it'll be as late as probably early next week, we're gonna go ahead and make the request for the fall, for the hotspots. You know, we're gonna look at a certain number that we think that we may need, because that supply and demand is dwindling, so we need to go ahead and get in front of that. You know, earlier, you know, that wasn't a problem. If we could make the call, it would be maybe a week or two, if that, and we would have it. But now, a lot of folks are now looking at those devices. So that's why we're gonna expedite the time with that.
Okay. Ms. Williams, did he answer your questions?
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Barnes?
If we were to choose the virtual option, as far as that, would we be looking at furloughs?
Are we gonna be, will we be looking at furloughs if we do the virtual? Was that the question?
They're all virtual.
Well, as you know, furlough, that's the last resort, as far as furloughs. You know, we, of course, when school ended in March, you know, we weren't, we were fortunate enough where we didn't have to furlough anyone. So we didn't have that at that time. So if we get into a situation that needs to be a discussion, we will, right now, I can't say that it is, because, you know, what we did in the spring, we didn't, we didn't have to. I think furlough also, before you have that conversation, it really is financially driven. You know, we have to look at what the revenue is. If our revenue streams are still looking good, then.
All right, something happened to him.
Yeah, we don't have to be concerned about what the, about furloughing. But if that, if that's, if that's a conversation that we need to have, we'll definitely bring it up. But right now, you know, we won't even know that. We couldn't even begin to say that that would be the case, even though we would be virtual as we ended the year. So that's something that will come about at a later date, if it does at all.
So are you saying that, for example, bus drivers and cafeteria staff, people that are hourly, they, in other words, they're not gonna be paid? It's gonna be the teachers and the principals, instructional staff, right? Bus drivers, hourly employees, they're not gonna be paid at all?
No, I didn't say that. Let me clear that up first. I said, everybody, everybody is going to be paid. We're not even having a conversation about furloughing, because, no, we're not even in that situation. So even if we're virtual, you know, what, some of the things that we've looked at doing is that we wanna, bus drivers will still be working. So even if we're virtual, you know, what, some of the things that we've looked at doing is that we wanna, bus, bus drivers will still be working because they're gonna be delivering meals. You know, SSO, security officers, they're gonna be on those buses. So people will still be working, schools will still be open because the administration will be there. Even if we're virtual, we still will have some teachers that will come in and do their lesson from their classroom. So we're gonna need custodians to come in and, and clean the, clean the facilities. We're gonna have to have deep cleaning as well, so people will be working. So, but as I've said, with, with, you start talking about furloughing, we can't even have that conversation unless it's something, uh, that Mr. Falk alerts us with or the state is saying that, hey, your funding is gonna be, uh, cut as a result of the economy being down, but right now, it, it's, it's opening up slowly and what has happened, you know, Hampton Roads has sort of, uh, they curtailed us a little bit in terms of, of hours of what we're doing, but I think right now, I mean, I could say we're okay for now. I mean, we start the year virtual, I know, I don't expect to have a conversation within the first month about furloughing.
Okay.
Mr. Parent, I had a question also.
Yes. Hello, go ahead.
When, actually, it's, it's not a question, just some things I would like for Dr. Bracy and staff to consider. I'm not looking for answers tonight, but, uh, could we, I guess, make sure we carefully, when we address attendance, that, that we're careful about it because I, I, I want it to be known that the expectation is for the student to be present, uh, during the session daily. Uh, I understand we have certain situations, but I don't want to be put out that attendance is not important and then we don't have them attending class because this, this is a very crucial moment we're in, especially for students in K through four, that this is gonna be a possible learning gap they're gonna have already. And I don't want to be put out that, that attendance is not the expectation of the school division because it still is. And, and they should be on those calls daily. Uh, also, uh, I wanna make sure that as a division that we can, we maintain a focus of the social emotional well-being of our staff, uh, as well as our students. Uh, it's, it's been a traumatic experience for everyone.
Yeah.
And even for staff, ever since we've closed, it's been non-stop training and learning new things and, and, uh, getting new, uh, 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 programs that we're gonna use for the students and, and, and they're going through, just like parents, like, and some of them are parents. So I just wanna make sure that while we're issuing these, uh, these new platforms and the trains that we're being cognizant of the fact that what they're going through emotionally also, emotionally also, uh, on a daily basis. And, uh, last but not least, I, I also wanna focus on, um, our spare students and, and the disadvantaged population. Uh, and I guess my question would be, and not an answer for now, but how would we, if we're gonna say we're gonna be a hundred percent virtual, uh, for the safety of, of all staff and all students? I know that we have a population that needs the services, I get that, but how do you, I guess, how do you explain still sending that staff into the schools for those students possibly and not everyone else? I mean, i- i- if you understand what I'm saying, how, how will we, you know, portray that message to everyone? That's gonna have to go in the buildings and those gonna get to stay outside of the buildings. And that's it, thank you.
Did you want Dr. Bracy to address this on the A?
I, I mean, or, or sooner if you could. I'm, I'm not looking for answers now, but I just wanted to put those thoughts out there, uh, for the staff.
Alright, on the board.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Parent, one last thing. Dr. Br-, you mentioned in your presentation about meeting with your advisory committee. Uh, I didn't see in the presentation, can you tell me what their overall thoughts were on, uh, returning to school?
With the, um, advisory, my, the teacher advisory group that I met with, um, uh, this afternoon, they were, uh, the majority, well, I think it was about a hundred percent, everybody said that, that they favor a, a virtual start. At least looking at a virtual start and then looking at the numbers to see how we can get the students back in because they realize and they understand, as they said, that the, the kids need to be back in, uh, but we wanted to make sure that, they wanted to make sure that it was safe for them to do so, but right now, they said, we need to look at a, a virtual start. And I think you all have already seen the, the survey from PEA, the one that they put together where they, they.
Yes.
They recommended, uh, a virtual start as well. And same thing I got from, uh, Mrs. Clifton, uh, with the PEA, the, they're not PTA, PTA. The PTA, the Council of PTAs, uh, they were, um, uh, unanimous in terms of, of a virtual start as well. So that, that's the feedback that I'm getting from, uh, all the, 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 the groups that I'm speaking with. Everybody's concerned about the safety. You know, they're concerned about this, the pandemic that we're under, but they also realize that, and what I appreciated from the teachers is that safety, they're, they're looking at safety first. They want to make sure that it's safe for them as well as the students to return. But they, but they said, and, and one of them in particular specifically, she said that I've got kids, you've got some kids that'll just take to, um, the, the virtual platform and they'll soar. But we have so many students that need that face-to-face, you know, they need that human, that human touch in, in order to motivate them. So that was a concern as well. And I told them, I understand, and I, I understand and I appreciate the passion that she had in this statement.
I, thank, thank you again, Dr. Bracy and staff, uh, for your work on this and thank you to the staff that's continuing to teach even through summer school and, and that's, uh, willing to do all for our kids. And I just wanna say that, uh, at all times, I always lean towards, uh, the, the knowledge of your staff and our teachers, uh, making decisions like this. Thank you.
Thank, Ms. Heinz, did you have a comment?
Yes, sir, um, thank you. I was, I wanted to give way to everybody and pretty much we're all asking about the same questions. Um, I do have a few, uh, further questions and whether they can be answered now or whether they can, you know, come at a later time. Um, at one point, we had talked about making buses hotspots, delivering wifi through some of the neighborhoods with buses. Um, has that been further discussed and are we closer to realizing that since we're looking at, um, some of our students not having access and us may not having enough, um, MFI or my spots or the hotspots that we can give them? Um, something was said about teachers coming into classes to do lessons. Is that a requirement or is that gonna be, um, what they prefer to do, um, if they can do it at home? Um, another question I've had are about teacher laptops. There's been a lot of discussion about, um, student devices, but a lot of our teachers, um, have voiced some concern about the reliability of their teacher-issued laptops. Um, and so where are we with that? But I think the biggest piece, as we talk about parents and we talk about, you know, webinars and training for parents, but also setting up a tech support line for parents. Um, so that parents have, um, accessibility to that tech support, whether it's from their phone or whether it's from their work, but a, a one-shot, I know a one-shot doesn't work for me as a teacher and a one-shot doesn't necessarily work for the student and so, and I work with it every day and so, um, if we could dedi-, find a way to do some dedicated, um, parent tech support, to give them a line, um, to, because I just think that they need as much support from us as we can give them. Um, so I would like to see if we could come up with a way that we could do parent tech support. Um, but I think the big issue with going virtual and I think it's, um, I, I think, I think March to June kinda has jaded our view of what virtual learning looks like, um, because of the mandates that we had in March that, you know, um, we couldn't hold work against students and attendance wasn't necessarily a thing and that came not from our office, but that came from Richmond to us and that was something that we had to live with. And so a lot of the questions that I have received about going virtual come down to what is the accountability? How are we gonna make sure the teachers are teaching? Because we'd had teachers that, you know, put up one or two lessons, uh, from my understanding for students and then that was it. Um, how are we gonna make sure that the parents understand that there is accountability and that there are grades and that this is real, that it's not, you know, March to June situation now that we're in, we're in game time, that is what I'll call it instead of pre-game. Um, so making sure that our parents and our stakeholders understand that we are in a different situation, that we're not doing, we're not doing crisis management like we were from Ju-, from March to June, but this is game time and this is for real. And so making sure those conversations are happening and ongoing because we know that, you know, a one, one-time conversation doesn't mean anything. So what is our plan for, for reaching out and to continue that message? Um, because really what, what I hear is, I want my kids to be safe, but I want it to be more meaningful than. And I get that as a, as a parent, I get that. You want your, you wanna make sure that your students are learning and that your students are growing. And that's where I'll stop just for a second, to see if anybody responds.
And Angelia, I wanna make sure that I jump in there, a- after you're finished, Dr. Bracy. I do have a question, Chairman Parent, when Dr. Bracy responds to Ms. Dr. Heinz.
Okay.
To ask, Leo, Deandra.
Alright, I got you. Alan and Beth Barnes, okay.
Alright, so we, um, Ms. Heinz, I, I called about one, two, three, about five, five questions in that, um, in your, in your, in your sentence. Alright, so first, the, the buses and the hotspots, yeah, Dean and I had a conversation, uh, about that and I think he is working on, uh, some, some type of software to equip the buses so that they will have that. So that's, that's in the works.
Okay, thank you.
As far as the teachers, um, being required to come to the buildings, well, if, if we're, if we're gonna be closed because of, of our concern as far as being safe and the safety is an issue, then what that means is that, is the expectation pretty much that we have now that we're in, in, in our offices and in our schools now. If, if you can get the work done at home, then that's what we're, that we will allow you to do that. But if it's something that you need to come into the office or the school to do, then you come and do it. When school starts, you would, we probably expected, most of the teachers may elect to stay at home and provide instruction, but they do have the option to come into the buildings and do the work. There may be times that they may have a small, uh, grade level meeting that they can set around a social distance. They will do that. Staff meetings, I'm sure will continue to be virtual because we can't bring a large group, uh, together, you know, that.
Answer that question real, because one of the questions I had dealt with that question. Um, what, if they, if they need to come in and they have school-age children, would they be able to bring them in, especially if they need to help them with their work?
Well, that's something that, that we're gonna have to look at, um, and I don't wanna say, I don't wanna say yes, I don't wanna say no. I need to look at the, the legal aspects of that and, and look at it from a standpoint with conversation with Mr. Carroll as well as Dr. James to see if that's possible. You know, what I can say, uh, along with that, if we were looking at a hybrid situation, one of the things that we were looking, that we were looking at doing was providing some type of childcare to those teachers that would have to come in during that time. So that was something that they were looking at with our, um, with our vendor that we use now for, for and afterschool care, Alphabets. So that's something that we were looking at then, but this is different. Now, one of the teachers this, uh, afternoon asked that, could they, would, could they come into the buildings? And the answer is yes, because one of the things we realize is that, you know, sometimes it depends on where you live too. Connectivity may not be the best. So if you, if you need to come into the building to teach your class, then by all means come and do that. You know, it's, it's, it's safe to say that a teacher, and if you're a teacher that has an IA, you definitely can come into a classroom, you have more than enough space to social distance.
Right.
That's fine, that's not a problem. So we're not saying that teachers can't come to the office, we're not saying that they have to come. But, you know, they're gonna use their own discretion and work with their, uh, building-level administrator and, and what that would look like.
Okay, um, Mr. Barnes?
Oh, no, I, I still got, uh, a, a few more that, that Mrs. Heinz had. The teacher, teacher laptops, uh, we're in the process now of, um, of ordering some, some new laptops for our, our teachers because with us now going fully, um, virtual, we realized that we needed to upgrade the teacher's laptop. And as I shared with the, this question came up with my teacher advisory group, is that we're gonna have, uh, our instructional assistants that's gonna be heavily involved now in instruction. So we now have, that's an additional order that we have to make to get, uh, uh, well, not appass, to get lap- laptops in their hands. So we wanna make sure that they're able to be involved because if you have a kindergarten classroom and you have sixteen students in there, the, the, you can use your IA and split that class up and then you can rotate. So that's one of the things that, that we're doing. So yes, to, uh, the teacher laptops. Parent, um, support, support line or training, uh, Dr. Win, I sent Dr. Win something, um, maybe an hour or two before the meeting in regards to that. And there will be parent training, um, available and we will also have our, um, our family li-, parent, parent liaisons that will be, uh, assisting as well in this. Dr. Win, you wanna add a little bit more about that, that, that training?
So our instructional technology team is working on some virtual sessions to help students and parents and they're planning to create videos that can be posted on the website of the schools and our division and then we can email those videos out to parents as well. Um, students can also assist their parents because we can work with them to show them things that they can do with their parents. And as I said earlier, we're planning to use our school, our parent liaisons and have parents able to reach out to teachers and to, uh, counselors and our liaisons to ask for the assistance they need. So we, uh, we plan to have some support for parents, definitely.
I wanna ask Dean something. Uh, when you, when you said you're going to send this out, those videos out to parents, Dean, what about our broadband? Because that, that's gonna create, I mean, can, do we have enough broadband that teachers can, uh, are we, are you or Department of Instruction can send all these videos out to parents?
Well, most of these platforms are, are, are not part of our network, so these, so.
I didn't know.
But, yeah, but the things that we are hosting, we're, we're, we're more than prepared for that.
Okay, that's all I wanna know.
Is there also a way too that we could, uh, put these on, uh, PSET? Because what I, what I he-, what I keep hearing is technology, 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 and if we have parents that aren't adept or aren't, um, able to get there, they need to have someplace where they can go first, um, to walk through it. So I would, I would really like to see PSET included in that conversation as well.
Good idea. Dr. Bracy, do you want me to also talk about the accountability for teachers?
Yeah, the, yeah, go ahead because that was, uh, and that was in the information that we sent out last night and the, the questions as well, so yes.
Well, that's number one, that was number one on my list. And Ms. Allen, I promise you, you gonna be next.
Well, why don't we let Ms. Allen go? Because maybe my question, you wanna, you wanna do that?
No, I, I'm gonna go, yield to you, Dr. Win. Three of my questions have already been asked, so go ahead and, um, I, I'll yield to you at this point and then.
Okay. Come back.
Thank you. So one of the biggest things that we're focusing on is uniformity and consistency in structures. Uh, we recognize that last year was a major flop for us because we were now all catapulted into a situation, but we have a lot more time and, um, opportunity to focus and to develop some structures. So what we are doing through the Department of, uh, through the Office of Curriculum Instruction, along with our principals at all levels and focus groups, uh, we are working on putting in structures that will help teachers, um, stay focused and be able to, uh, provide, um, the greatest amount of instruction that they can to their students uh, because we recognize that this is a totally different platform for everyone.
Yeah.
And we also need to embrace the fact that virtual learning is here to stay. I remember when I was hired for this job, one of the questions was, where will we be in education in ten years? And I talked about blended learning. We are there. Uh, no matter what happens at this point, we will continue with our virtual learning platform. And so what we are doing is putting in place, for one thing, we are putting in place weighted grades and, uh, the document that Dr. Bracy sent you all outlines how grades will be weighted. Um, there will be thirty percent for, I'm trying to get to that part, uh, thirty percent, twenty percent, I think forty percent. And so they're weighted to ensure that our students are graded appropriately and fairly. In addition to that, each content area is providing a minimum number of assignments that students must complete so that we don't end the school year with a student having completed two classroom assignments and being given a grade for that. For instance, I believe in English, they, they must do at least five assignments in each of those areas, um, for classroom testing, um, different activities that they have to do. And that's the minimum. Now, the teacher can give more if they want, but they have to have a minimum of those. All of these things will be monitored by the principal. In addition to that. In addition to that, um, they will be accountable for documenting the time that they spend engaging with their students in online sessions as well as in their activities. And they will have to assign student, uh, grades, they have to keep a log of communication from parents, um, because it's just, it will be totally different from anything we've ever done. And so we recognize that, and to Reverend Patilla's point, we're also recognizing the fact that this is very stressful for our staff. Because they are having to manage their own families and they're managing this COVID for themselves personally and wanting to do the best for their students and their families. And with that in mind, we are creating structures, something that we've never really done before, but we're asking everyone basically to be on the same page, doing the same thing. If we got first graders having a lesson, they can pre-record that lesson, and that's a lesson that every first grader in Portsmouth can see. Now, they do have options where they can be creative and they can do things differently. But for the most part, we are giving them the templates and we're giving them the curriculum and the pacing guide and giving some lessons that will be pre-recorded and uploaded in school. So we're going to try to provide as much support as we can for teachers, for staff, and for students.
Dr. Nguyen, let me ask you a question. As a principal, how do I monitor that the teachers are at least providing a minimum of five lessons? How do, how do I, as a principal, monitor that? How is that being monitored?
Well, there's grade book. All the grades will be going into the, the Power School grade book, and they will be recorded just as they always are. In addition to that, though, and I'm glad you asked that question. Principals can actually go into the classes. When a teacher's teaching an online class, a principal can go in and observe, observe that teacher along with the students just as they would if they were walking into a classroom. A principal can engage with the students, they can engage with the staff. And therefore, that's the reason that we are requiring all of our administrators to be trained in this learning management system as well as the teachers. Because they need to be able to manipulate this virtual learning system just as well as their teachers do.
I guess this question is for Ms. Durn because are, are you Dr. Nguyen? Evaluations, at the end of the year, you know, you have some teachers that are evaluated. So principals would have to use, it depends on how long we're going to be in, in phase one, option one. But at the end of the year, those teachers that, that must be evaluated, principals will have to have some documentation, and I guess this is the way that they're going to document, document. Is that correct, Ms. Durn? Or Dr. Nguyen, or whoever?
That is correct, Mr. Parent, and thank you for asking that question. I want to take the opportunity to thank the HR team, specifically Ms. Harold for working on a document that we can use while we're doing virtual instruction that will help principals to make notes and specific comments about teachers and how they are using the technology. There are best practices that we're prepared to share with administrators and teachers. Let them know that we don't expect that this will be a situation where, where it will be they're talking just at the students, that they will be engaging students in instruction just as they would if they were in the classroom. And there are some look fours that are on the evaluations that principals can use to indicate that they've seen teachers implementing these practices.
Good, thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
I know Dr. Simmons was smiling earlier when we were talking about furloughing, and I wanted to make sure that, that he got an opportunity to make some comments about his, his staff. Because I know bus drivers and people who are not engaged in the, in the classroom, that they will still be paid and that they'll still be working in the schools. Dr. Simmons, did you want to make a comment about that, your staff?
Thank you, Mr. Parent. We're just, you know, certainly defer to Dr. Bracy and the, you know, his superintendent's cabinet in terms of working through all those issues. We've been busy, as you can imagine, trying to get schools prepared, and so really have not heard anything on our end, or anybody forced that concern right now.
Okay.
And so if it does, or when it, if it comes up, certainly, you know, I'll defer to Dr. Bracy and his leadership as we work through those issues.
Right, okay. All right, Dr. Bracy. Board members, do you have any other comments of Dr. Bracy in his presentation?
This is parent, this is Karen Schumate. I have one last suggestion.
Sure.
Okay, so normally we deal with the before and after here. And understanding that there's going to be a percentage of children because of their ages that can't stay home alone. And it's also my understanding that the CARES Act that the city received will allow the affordability to provide some type of assistance to families. So I wanted to see if we could possibly collaborate with the city in, in hopes of assisting those families who will have to deal with childcare issues. And that's just to put it out there, that's a suggestion to see if we can possibly do something to help those families that, that are going to have some of those issues that we face in the fall, excuse me, in the fall.
Right. Mr. Fogg, are we still receiving from the CARES Act about five million? I thought you had said close to about five million dollars. Are we still receiving about five million dollars from the, from CARES Act?
Yes, sir. It's about five point three million from the original allocation of CARES Act money.
And how is, how are those funds going to be used? Is that something Miss Schumate just brought it up? Is that going to be used for buying Chromebooks and that kind of thing, are there stipulations?
That, there's a number of areas where you can use that money for. Primarily, much of that money will go to technology, obviously, because we have to provide the hotspots and we have to provide the computers. There are other areas that we may use it for, some of the PPE, some of the cleaning supplies, as well as some other areas that are addressed in that application. But pretty much the majority of it will go to technology.
Okay. All right, board members.
What Miss Schumate is talking about is the, the amount that the city sees. Maybe they can use some of their funds to help some of the families within the city of Portsmouth with the childcare option.
And how is that, how does that work?
My suggestion was for us to reach out to them to see how we can be of any assistance because this is affecting the, the children and the parents that we serve. But I'm sure they have, you know, quite a, quite amount of CARES Act funds that they can utilize for those particular families who are going to have the issue with peer needs. So that could be through some type of program through the human services or whatever the case may be, but I still think that we should try to reach out and see what we can do in collaboration.
Okay.
All right, and I will, I will, I'll make contact. Go ahead, Reverend Patilla.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Ms. Allen, I've never asked a question, I don't, she's still waiting.
Yes, I was. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Clue. Go ahead.
It, it's not Clue, it's Angelia.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Um. My initial, my initial question, and some of my questions have already been answered. What is the initial timeframe that we're looking at when we vote tonight? For virtual learning? Is it a nine week? Is it a first semester? Is it first of the year? What is the timeframe?
I would, I would recommend, Ms. Allen, the first nine weeks. At least that will give us an opportunity to see, you know, what the numbers are looking like at that time. Because if we, if we say tonight, first semester, we could have a vaccine by November, December possibly, or the numbers will be at a lower level of cases, of new cases that we may be able to, to start a, a hybrid approach. So this gives us more flexibility if we, if we start off with the nine weeks. So that's what I would recommend.
Okay, and I just, just a thought on the nine weeks, that would take us to about November? If I'm, if I'm not mistaken? And with November, then would we, would we amend the calendar? Because we have Election Day schools out, Veterans Day, and then you're on Thanksgiving break in the month of November. So as you start a possible hybrid model, would that be confusing with the in and out because of the school dates being closed? I'm just asking.
No, the calendar's already set. So whether we're face to face or virtual, you know, that, that won't change. Because even if we were in the hybrid model, you, you know, there will be some students that probably, the families will say, I still prefer a one hundred percent virtual model. So the instruction will still continue, whether they were face to face or, or hybrid, or face to face or, or one hundred percent virtual. So that won't change. So if everybody, those students now that say they want to come to school, you know, they still, they won't lose anything. They'll just get what they were receiving virtually, face to face for two days.
Okay, and then.
The calendar's set. I mean, and Dr. Karmody sent out a, a calendar earlier this week, just so principals would have that.
Okay, and then my second question, do we have all of the teachers that we need already secured for us for this transition? Or are we still in need of teachers?
Well, I don't even have to ask Ms. Durn because, I mean, I know we're always looking for, for teachers. So, I mean, if we were going to start, if, if, if we went to start today, we would still need subs if we were face to face and there was no pandemic. So even in the virtual setting, you know, we're still going to have to have subs in place. And we, we talked about that at our, on our, at our senior staff meeting on Monday, the importance of substitutes. So we're going to be trying, we're going to be bringing up some things with the HR subcommittee as well as the finance subcommittee, because we need to look at a permanent, maybe somewhat of a more permanent solution with, with subs in some of our buildings so that that can help us with this instruction. Because they're going to be key, particularly now in the, in this hybrid model. Well, not hybrid model, or potentially hybrid being virtual, then a hundred percent virtual as well. They're going to be key.
If we don't have enough teachers at the start, are we looking at increasing the class? For, for lack of a better term, classroom model where there might be more kids than normal to a teacher to bridge that gap?
I think what, what we're going to do is, it'll be like, it'll be as though we were with no pandemic. We will have a sub for each class. But if we're looking at the, the high school level, and let's look at the middle school, because the question that you're talking about, we discussed it earlier this week, is that, you know, we have some teachers that, that give up a planning period and are compensated for that, for that period. So that way, we can put a certified teacher in front of those students. So that's something that we discussed that we will be doing as well. Because that way, they're getting a certified teacher and they'll be getting the, the grades from, from that teacher. So we have teachers that are willing to do that.
Okay, and then my last question in regards to the hotspots where we talked about the buses. If we're doing hotspots to some of the communities, will the hotspots be enough that they go into the homes? Or will students have to come out to the bus area, closer to the bus area in order to connect? If they don't have that? And then the second portion of that is, has there been any discussion with COCs? Now that we're in the pandemic and more people are going to be needing, needing internet services in their home? Has there been any discussion with any representatives from COCs on how we can assist our parents with getting internet in, in the house? And then back to whether or not our hotspots are going to be strong enough to go in the home? Are our students going to have to come out and be closer to the bus in order to connect if they don't have that connectivity?
Well, we, we, we're ordering, we're going to order, we hope to order enough hotspots to, to take care of that as far as the need. You know, for summer school, you know, we had some that were left over that we didn't actually use. So I think we're going to make our, we're going to make our first order, which will be, of course, more than what we did for summer school. But, you know, once you place that order, you're, you're married to that number for the remainder of the year. So we want to make sure that we, we, we want to be efficient with that. You know, we don't want to go out and just order five thousand just to be ordered them. We want to make sure that the need is there. So we're going to put out a pretty substantial number initially upfront with the, for the, for the hotspots. And we hope that that will satisfy, as I shared, you know, the survey that we did in June, you know, of those that completed, it said ninety-two percent have internet connectivity. And, and looking at, if you look at that compared to what happened during the summer, it's probably right because, you know, we ordered, I don't know if it was three hundred or five hundred devices, you know, we had, we had quite a few that, that they didn't pick up or they didn't need. So if they, if we start out and we, with our initial order, and that covers everything that we need as far as connectivity, then there may not be a need for the, the actual school bus to be equipped. But I know Dean and Dr. Simmons, they were working together to put that in place just to have it anyway. So that, that will already be there if, if, if the need arises for that.
To, to follow with what Mrs. Allen said, I know at one time, and I don't know if it's still available, but COCs came before the board and offered the board and offered our parents the opportunity to have internet connection for a, a very low rate. I think it was like maybe somewhere between five and nine dollars a month. Dr. Bracy, could you look into COCs or, or, and/or Verizon to see if they, if they offer any kind of major discount for, for our, for our city? Because I know at one time, Ms. Allen, they did. But it was up to the parents to choose it, but it was very inexpensive for a, a parent, for, you know, for a parent to have internet capabilities for less than ten dollars a month. So that may be something we might want to look at.
Yes, Chairman Parent, we already, already took care of that. Around, probably around April, I was on the phone with Representative Fromcocks, and they were, they were offering, I think it was nine ninety-five, nine ninety-nine a month.
Yes, yeah.
For that, and I think at that time, they also gave you a laptop if you.
Yes.
You signed up for it as well. I think they, the, the timeframe for, for that, I think, was about maybe, maybe what, two months, and I think free. And then I think they expanded it to probably ninety days. But we got that information, we also received it, we posted it on our, on our website so that our parents would be able to see that. So, yeah, we, we've already had that conversation with COCs.
Good, very good.
But if they have our, if they have one of our math eyes, then they're, they'll be fine, they can connect to the, to our device.
Got you. All right, board members, any other, any other questions? Mr. Parent, Ms. Heinz.
Ms. Williams?
Yeah, Ms. Williams chimed in.
Ms. Williams.
I keep, they keep unmute, unmute me, so. Okay, I have a question from a parent that, that just sent me. She said, I've listened to the meeting and I realized that mental health was not addressed. What kind of assistance are they going to provide mental health clients? Some are ODD, and parents cannot control, some may have ADHD, et cetera. Also, many might, may have had ideas of committing suicide due to trouble dealing with the new norm of no socializing. And, and I, I text her back and said, most of the time, I know, I do believe that the school system, if you have issues like that with suicidal ideations or thoughts, then I believe they reach out to behavioral healthcare. Where they send out, they used to anyway, when I worked there, send out professionals to do mental health evaluations. And they are the ones that determine whether the person needs hospitalization or what, whatever. So I would think that the schools, the principals, as you said, would be in the building. The school counselors, I'm not sure how they're going to fit into the virtual program, but if, maybe that's something that we could consider if parents or students are having difficulty, where you know they're at the point that they do need more intense mental health services. So I, I hope I answered that question, and if you have anything to add to that, Dr. Bracy, how they would handle that, please, please chime in.
Williams, then, we thought about that as we closed out the previous school year. We realized that there were, we realized where students were as far as their mindset. And I asked Dr. Karmody, and he reached out to the Slicked, who's our guidance supervisor. And I asked Dr. Kamart, and he reached out to uh the Slick Day, who's our guidance supervisor. And she talked to the counselors, because I, we we made sure, and we sent it, we sent this information out. That any students that felt they had the need, they needed to speak with someone, that they were to contact their school guidance counselor. So we we knew that that was gonna be a a concern then. So I I'm sure that process will will be in place. You know, we'll we'll put that information out. And and we were also thinking about staff as well. And Mrs. Duran sent something out to our staff that were that were dealing with this issue. And told them how to seek the needed support that they may need, because we we realized that this new norm hit us, you know, out of nowhere. We didn't expect it to be this magnitude. So we wanted to put what the what support pieces we could put in place at that time. So we did that then, and we'll definitely continue it now.
Dr. Bracy, um to piggyback on that and what Board Member Williams said. Um are the day treatment providers still gonna be there for the students? Is it gonna be in home if we're virtual?
You know, Ms. Atkinson, I don't, yeah, that that they'll still be there, you know, we're um, they're in the process now of wrapping up the R F P. Um with the uh day treatment providers. But I, what we have to decide and we have to see what it, what can they do? Because, you know, our contract with them was what they do inside our buildings. Now, if they're working with students and sometimes they have contracts where they do after-school um um training, after-school therapeutic training. With them. So I'm gonna have to find out for sure what that looks like. I'm not sure, I don't know, Dr. Nguyen, are you familiar with what that will look like uh with the day treatment? If we're on a total virtual uh platform, I would have to research that myself. I don't know that off the top of my head.
That's something that we will probably have to revisit with them, because um there may be restrictions within their agencies as well. We don't know what those are. Um we, we know that there is a parent in-home component for most students. Uh but I'm sure we'll have conversations with them when we get to that point. We also will have our behavior therapists in our schools and our counselors will be very connected to students. And so all of the precautions that we take with students um with their their social and emotional care. Uh will still be in place. Students who have documented disabilities or um special needs will be serviced. There are special education programs if they have an I E P or five oh uh or if they don't, they may have a five oh four. And we are also including our social emotional learning in our our regular school programs. And so we have components of that there too.
And just um a quick comment, Chairman Parent, um just in regards to um R F Ps. And the dollars that we're spending on technology and P P E. I just wanna make sure that we are still um in line with our aspirational goals for our N W B E program. And still reaching out to um M W B E vendors. Um seeing if um we have Portsmouth businesses that could support us with the amount of dollars that we're spending.
Okay. Any other questions for board members?
Chairman Parent, yes, it's it's Mrs. Hines. Thank you. Doctor Nguyen, um I had a a parent send me a text message and asking about um possible schedules. What a what a schedule would look like. So for those students that were, those parents that did not have kids in summer school. When we talk about virtual learning or, you know, I've got a nine-year-old, so I'm just gonna use mine as an example. Is he gonna be tied to a computer from nine to three every day? Um what does a virtual day look like for these parents and for these kids? So I, because what I, what I get is that's a big deal. What does it look like? We know it's a new norm, we know it's gonna be something different, but how different is it gonna look? So I don't know, um, Dr. Bracy, if you wanna pass this to Dr. Nguyen. Um I know it was in an email that you sent, and I will be more than happy to share that, but I think if you can speak to that now um with this audience. I think that would go a long way.
Well, summer school was a great learning curve for us, because we gave a prescribed schedule to the teachers. And the feedback that we received from them uh gives us the indication that this will work really well for students. We recognize that there are limited amounts of time that we should anticipate that students should be engaged in online learning. For instance, we know that a kindergarten or first grader probably won't make it much past fifteen or twenty minutes. Um and so recognizing that, my staff is creating a schedule. That will um focus around the age groups and the amount of time that they can be expected to engage in an actual online session. With the teacher. I think the most valuable piece after that comes in, the the check-ins and the small groups and the office hours. That the teachers will hold with individual students, something that we were not able to offer last year. So if we're looking at the schedule as we did it for the summer, we may say that um, for instance, on Monday, English might offer new instruction during their learning time. We anticipate that uh for instance, in an elementary school, which will look very different from middle and high school, they may have a morning meeting. They may do the pledge of allegiance, and then they may have a fifteen to thirty-minute lesson depending upon what grade level it is. And then for the rest of the day, the students would have check-in or they might have encore. But we're trying to work out a schedule that's very student-friendly and very teacher-friendly. Uh because we recognize that there are limitations, not just with the parents' time, but with the attention span of the students as well. So uh we don't have the actual schedule, but we are working on that. I put a template in the uh F A Q that Dr. Bracy gave you all. We will have an actual schedule that all teachers will have to follow, because this will not only help the students, but it will help the teachers as well. Be organized and ensure that students are getting the the requisite amount of time each day.
And this is where, I'm sorry to to piggyback, but it, this is gonna be where the instructional assistants are also in the classroom, working with. Working with students and with teachers. Um what about those students that are A D H D or that may be, you know, on the spectrum? Where they don't really get behavioral or they don't get, you know, they're more in school for the for the um. The the socialization and they need that one-on-one to kind of process and to, you know, to to help them process and to produce that work. Um is that still gonna be available or were those, are those the type of students that we're talking about? Um for special ed that are, would be coming into the building, because I know that there's a special group that would be coming into the building that we do things in-house. That can't be done at home or can't be done in a caretaker's house. But for those kids that um. That they're 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 not severe and profound, but they do need services and they do need that one-on-one, is that where the instructional assistant comes in? Or is that where in school comes in?
Each case is gonna be uh assessed individually. The T P will make the assessment. If the student has an I E P. Then the I E P will be followed uh according to what those accommodations are, just as we do with face-to-face. But I think that the most important thing is that the communication piece is going to have to be there between the parent and the teacher. If the student is struggling at home, if they're having issues, then we can work around that. Instructional assistants will be used to supplement or to assist teachers. And there may be opportunities for them to work within small, with children in small groups. Virtually or, you know, even by Google Classroom or um with even by um talking on the telephone. There are all kinds of methods we can use to communicate. So I think that we just are gonna have to look at students by name and by B, just as we do throughout the school year. That there's really no difference there. Um I think that we will see certain situations arise as this, as this. Um as we continue to build this platform and as we continue to go into this different uh paradigm. Because it will be a brand-new paradigm for everyone.
Right, okay. I I just, these are just a lot of the big things that parent, you know, that I get asked and I don't know how to answer. So thank you for for this.
All right, any other board members? Is this Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Okay, Deandre, go ahead.
Um I did have a lot of questions, but the um most of the board members um asked them as well. So with that being said, I just wanted to um let the let the staff know and let the board members know. What some of the teachers and staff and parents have been saying on the Facebook Live that I have going on. And and a lot of our staff said thank you to the to the work that our staff did. Um they really feel like their questions are being answered and they really feel like we have a plan. And I read one comment that said our plan seems better than some of the other districts. So I just wanted to let y'all know about that.
Very good, sounds good.
Mr. Parent, I have one more thing, this is Cardio.
Governor Patino, yes, sir.
Uh, Dr. Bracy, I know that we're gonna reassess the situation in November as far as uh returning to school. But uh, could you, could you, when, I guess, in your talks with Dr. James, could you let us know what your data point is gonna be like for the metric? Is it gonna be, cuz I I'm not a fan of the governor's numbers, like he's, he says ten percent um infection rate is good enough. Uh, you know, to operate normally. I I personally think five and below. So I I guess, uh could you let us know, and so we can have discussions sometime sooner about what our data point is gonna be as far as what we're looking at? As far as returning to school, uh and what we're comfortable with, cuz I I I think information coming from. Has been compromised in the governor's office. I'd rather divorce our own decision on that, so we could be comfortable sending our kids and staff back.
Right, we 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 can do that. And part of our plan to return um inside the the building anyway. Um has to be submitted to the Health Department. So we will, we we got, we may have some time now to work on this. If if this, the board's pleasure for the virtual start, you know, so we'll have that ready.
All right, thank you so much.
Any other question?
And let me follow one thing, Mr. Parent, you were asking about uh Cox. So we we do have a meeting scheduled with them um for Monday. So.
Oh, good.
So that's that's our ready schedule.
Cuz I think that that would be very helpful and how we disseminate that, because that's, that is really, I mean, when they came before the board. That was really a deal that, I mean, I wished I had that deal uh that would, that is most affordable to parents. And having that uh internet uh capability, that would be great. But anyway, the one question I have. I mean, you've answered all of that accountability, because that was my my heartburn of how that all was going to take place instructionally. And um ha- holding staff, holding students accountable. And um, you know, I've done a very good job in in answering those questions. Um when a parent comes or a teacher comes to the school. Uh you've already said that the schools are going to be manned by the principals there. Now, will the uh professional assistant, uh cuz you gotta be buzzed. If if I wanted to come to a school. Uh there's gotta be somebody to buzz me in. So I assume that the the professional assistants would be there. Um or the principal or the the S O S, S O A, S O A, S O S or the S R O. Would be available to buzz them in. I just don't want parents or or teachers to come to school and not have access to getting in.
Yes, the um, the the S S Os, I know that they will, they will be there, because. In putting up, in looking at our safety precautions, when we're putting up the Plexiglas shields. You know, we're also gonna have a station for the S S Os at their station when people come in and and sign in into the building. So, yes, yeah, they they will.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions before that you need to ask Dr. Bracy before we um take a vote? Um, this is item two point seven.
I have one further question, I'm so sorry.
Oh, okay.
I'm so sorry. Uh it is Ms. Hines and 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 Mr. Parent, this question is gonna take us back a few years. Lesson plans.
Yes.
Are we, are we working with teachers on how to build lesson plans for this virtual? Are they gonna have to be turned in? What is that new game? Because as we know, it's a new game for teacher, for students and for parents, but it's also a new game for teachers. And so um a lot of my inbox right now is blowing up going lesson plans, lesson plans. Um so I I hate to, I know it's a, it's a bad word to several of us. Um but if you can give us just a glimpse of what lesson plans will look like, Dr. Nguyen, and I'm looking at you right now. So thank you for the grin and the smile and the and the and the look of confidence on your face. But if you can address that, then I think I'm done for the night.
Well, we've been having this conversation within my team, and of course, we know that lesson plans are the uh the biggest. Um issue for many of our staff. Um and as I've explained to them, um lesson plans as we knew them will not be the same either. Uh because teachers are gonna be so encumbered with uh actually creating the lessons within the. Uh virtual platform that that will probably serve as the basis of the lesson plan. However, that's not to say that we won't have a lesson plan, because you have to have a plan to teach. Uh my staff is working to create a template for that, but we believe that it will be less stressful than what we've had to deal with in the past. Much of what we've had to do with the lesson plans has come out of the school improvement process and the requirements that we have, which we still do. But we've gotten a lot of flexibility with accreditation and and accountability and so forth. Um so as far as a formal process where teachers turning in lesson plans, everything's gonna be done virtually. So uh if we're doing it virtual, and we're also working more within our teams. As I said, I've instructed principals that all the first-grade teachers would be teaching the same lesson. It just makes it better for everyone. And they would adjust it for their individual students, but the lesson will be the same. So if they're planning as a team, then one teacher only has to, you know, one teacher can do the recording this week, one can do it next week. We are looking for ways to make it uh less stressful for teachers, uh because we know this whole process is stressful. You know, all of us who are working from home on Zoom recognize that you work harder than you do when you're actually in the building. And something will be for our teachers. And so we're very con- cognizant of that. And we are trying to create as many structures as we can to simplify the process for teachers, to take a lot of that stress off of them. And literally giving them things or having them work together to create things that will make it easier for everyone. So to your point, I can't say we won't have them, but I know that it is an issue. And we are working diligently to create something very simple for teachers.
And and Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Nguyen, I assume that at the end of, when May comes, we don't know what, we don't know how this virus is going to. End, when it's gonna end, may not end, uh there may be a vaccine. Uh but you do not see in May any S O L testing. I think State Board of Education has waived that. Because um we don't know, I mean, at the end, the first nine weeks. Uh it could be uh in January, the second semester, that. We're at level four and we go back, everybody goes back to school. So uh what what have you heard, that you or Dr. Bracy heard? As far as what the State Board of Education is going to require as far as S O L testing?
Well, they've not made a ruling on that yet. They have to wait for the um Department, the U S Department of Education. Because the accountability for us is contingent upon the count, the constraints and the accountability that we have to be for the federal government. With reading mathematics. Once the U S D O E makes a rule, and then the state will follow suit. My gut feeling is that if we are basically all on virtual, then we may have a waiver this year. But we are moving forward with understanding right now that we are still gonna be held to S O L testing.
Okay.
And as soon as the state superintendent gives us guidance, we're ready to move forward.
Okay. All right, board members, you've had an opportunity. Do any of you have any more questions of Dr. Bracy? Or any members of his staff?
I I do have one more question for Dr.
Oh, Ms. Hines, you promised.
I know, I'm sorry. Well, this one goes directly to the point. So I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Dr. Bracy this, in your professional opinion. Is there any way that we do not open virtually with the outline and what the governor has given us? Or is this gonna be where we're at? So my question is, is if we defer voting tonight until August the eighth. Do we see anything changing between now and August eighth?
Oh, gosh, I don't think so. Oh, excuse me.
Uh, no, you're good. I I and the reason I'm asking is, is there's, i- if there's no, I mean, it's less than two weeks. You don't get any great data points between now and two weeks out um from the governor. If if the decision that we come to tonight is gonna be the same as it is in two weeks. Then that's what I'm looking at. So in your professional opinion and what you hear from the superintendent's talk. Um and from your inside channels, is there any way that virtual does not happen and that we are able to open with a hybrid?
Ms. Hines, I I don't, I don't, I listened to the the governor when he talked specifically about Hampton Roads. And someone asked him the question, and they said, how long do you think Hampton Roads will be in this um.
Yeah.
Restriction. And he said, usually, he looks at the data for two to three weeks. Before they make some type of uh decision to change. So based on the information that I heard him say, then I don't see anything changing within the next two to three weeks. So pushing it back won't change anything based on the information that I heard specifically from him. And and with that being said, with what uh our teacher advisory group, our council of P T As. Our P E A, you know. you know, those groups have said, I mean, they shared, and our parents that completed the survey and staff, I mean, you see where they stand with all of this. So based on that, and, you know, and coupled that with the presentation that Dr. James shared tonight, you know, we're in a situation right now that we have to really be cautious and just err on the side of safety.
So Dr. Bracy, the next item on the agenda is for the board. This will be a roll call vote. And your recommendation to the board tonight will be to reopen Portsmouth Public Schools virtual learning for all for the first nine weeks. Is that your recommendation to the board tonight?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. All right. There is, that is the next item. It's a roll call vote. Do I have a motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendation that we open Portsmouth Public Schools virtual learning for all for the first nine weeks?
This is Angelia Allen for approval.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
This is Angelia Allen for approval.
All right.
Second?
And there's a second. Any discussion? Here are no discussions. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hackinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb, ever come back?
No.
Reverend Patello?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
All right. Board members, I will ask you, if you would please let Dr. Bracy and his staff publicize this. I know that some of you would like to get on Facebook. And, but I think it would be professional for Dr. Bracy and Lauren to have, I mean, it would be nice, Lauren, if you would be able to contact the three TV stations.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's already on WTKR.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They've been watching.
Okay.
But we have our press release and a message to staff and families. Ready to go.
Okay, very good. All right. Okay, looks like we have, we are now, we're going to open the school. First, we're going to look at this at the end of the first nine weeks. And the next item on the agenda is the board retreat, and that's August the eighth. And I'd like to hear from you whether you would like to have in-person or virtual. I think maybe the governor has already decided that, I mean, as long as we keep it to fifty people. But then you, when you have us, and then you have Dr. Bracy's staff, you're getting up there. I, if you want to have a virtual meeting, there are two items that we, we need to, we need to take care of at the retreat that we do every year, but that could, that could be done in August thirteenth. But that's the board's evaluation. That's not critical. But we have to do the superintendent's evaluation. And all of you, please, make sure that you get your evaluations to Kathy, because she needs to compile all this information and have it ready for us, whether we do it on the eighth or whether we do it on the thirteenth. But let me hear from you. What do you, what do you want, what do you, how do you want this set up? Would you like to, because we were going to set it up at Wilson High School in the Little Theater. What is the board's pleasure? Let me, let me hear from you.
Mr. Parent?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Williams?
Is it necessary that we, that we do the retreat? Could we do the evaluation, say, at the August thirteenth meeting? Because I think the retreat was, our basic focus was going to be on reopening of schools.
Yeah.
I mean, that was just my thought. Do we need to, do we need to have it? And I will ask to be excused. I do have a wedding for my goddaughter that day that I did not know. I was going to come to vote, but since we've already voted.
Right.
That was just a thought. Do we have to have it?
Mrs. Williams, I mean, we can take what the items that, the additional items that are on the agenda and actually add it to the August thirteenth meeting. Because I haven't taken a look at that, but I don't, I haven't seen many, many items up there. Mrs. Williams may be able to tell me if I'm wrong.
Kathy, what items do we have for the retreat?
The retreat?
Yes, ma'am.
Hang on one second.
I know we were bringing in.
We have a presentation, Mr. Parent. I know we have a presentation. We have the renaming that we want to discuss.
I've got a point of committee for that.
Yes.
I mean, I'm all for, I mean, we don't need to meet on the eighth, and we can take care of our business on the thirteenth. I'm all for.
What's that here? I have it.
Go ahead.
There was a reopening of schools, the survey results that you've already done. Then the school name change overview, CTE program update, and CNI update. And they were going to approve the student representative and the alternate. And then, of course, the presentation about the break in mention from PRHA.
Ms. Williams?
And that was it.
Board members, I mean, we can delay, I mean, we can move this to the thirteenth. I'm kind of agreeing with Mrs. Williams at this point, if this is okay with you, that we just forego the retreat and move those items to August thirteenth. What say you?
But, Mr. Parent, the only issue I have, if you can go farther into detail about your renaming committee, because I do know that we wanted to have it open to the public for them to come in and speak about the renaming. So what is that process going to be? And as long as the public is going to have an option to speak about this when we do open it up for that, that's, that was the main concern that I had, is if we do virtual, how are we going to get those public comments in?
Well, hold on just a minute. I'm going to have Mr. Carroll, because he's outlined the process. Go ahead, Mr. Carroll.
Sure. The first thing that needs to happen according to policy is that the school board itself as a body has to decide that it's appropriate to rename the school. And then, once that decision is made by the board collectively through a vote, then the chairman, Mr. Parent, would appoint a committee of three members who would then go out and host at least two public meetings to field those type of comments, Ms. Hines. And then after the committee itself decides on what renaming action it'd like to take, then it presents back to the full board for consideration of that recommendation. So the public input process, while it certainly can be in a public forum when the school board itself decides if it's appropriate to engage in a renaming process, also happens at the committee level, which are also public hearings. So there's kind of a twofold way that occurs.
And Ms. Hines, in talking with Mr. Carroll, I don't see the process ending until sometimes in November or December. Okay?
Okay.
It's not something that, it's not something that we were going, I mean, we were going to do August the eighth or even the thirteenth.
Right.
I mean, in other words, we will, we will vote to do, I mean, to do the renaming. We'll get that out of the way, and I will appoint a three-man committee, a third-person committee. And then those, those three will then be responsible for setting up the hearings and having the hearings, and then bringing the recommendation back to the chair, and then the chair brings it back to the board. And I don't see that process being completed until sometimes in November or December.
Okay.
So there'll be plenty of time for at least the two hearings.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you.
So am I hearing from the rest of the board members that we do not need to have a retreat this year? And that we will have our meeting on August thirteenth? And will that be in, that will be in-person, I assume? Since everything else, is it going to be in-person? So is that what I'm hearing from the board?
That works for me.
I don't think we need to vote on it. I mean, I just need for you guys to. I'm hearing, we're not going to have a retreat on, we're not going to have a retreat August the eighth. That's what I'm hearing from the board members, right? Am I correct?
Yes.
Allen? Schumate?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right. And Ms. Allen?
Yes, sir.
All right. So it looks like we're not going to have a retreat on the eighth, and those items will be deferred to the virtual meeting on the thirteenth. All right?
Mr. Parent?
Excuse me. Who's that?
This is, this is Angelia Allen. At one point, you said we're being in-person on the thirteenth, and then it's virtual.
No, 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 no. No, it's going to be virtual. It'll be virtual on the thirteenth. I was trying to get, I was mixing up the eighth being in-person and, you know, no. I think, given the situation with the governor with Hampton Roads, I think that we want, we're going to have to have a virtual meeting on the thirteenth.
And Mr. Parent?
Yes, sir.
I will, I will forward the, my artifacts for the board members to have for the, for the evaluation as well.
Oh, thank you. Yes. And please get those to Kathy before the thirteenth. And so we can take care, we can take care of that. Okay?
Chairman Parent, this is Board Member Ackerson.
Yes, ma'am.
PRHA was scheduled to have that presentation for the retreat. Where can they send their docs for their presentation that they're doing to the school board?
To Doc, I guess to Dr. Bracy, right?
Are you talking about to be on the agenda for the thirteenth?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
If she can, if she sends them to me, I can forward them to Ms. Channell's.
Okay.
And then she'll have it all loaded up in board docs.
Okay. Thank you.
Because those items, most, some of the items that are on the eighth, Kathy will transfer them to the thirteenth.
I will, and I will send you a draft of it.
Yeah, okay. All right. Good. All right. We have covered all of our items on the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Move forward.
All right. All right. Thank you all very much. Y'all have a nice evening, and thank you.